Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 24th River Falls City Council Meeting. Tonight, the River Falls Honor Guard will do us the honor of carrying in the colors for us, presenting them. So if everybody could please stand. You say the pledge now.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shoulder. Order. Right. Forward. Post the colors. Left. Face. Forward. March.
Okay, Christie, grab a roll call, please.
Beerstead. Downing.
Here.
Gagne.
Here.
Morsette.
Here.
Odine.
Here.
Page.
Here.
Watson.
Here.
Approval of minutes from the June 26th meeting.
I move approval of the June 26th meeting minutes.
Second.
Um, next we'll have approval of the bills from, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, okay. Next, we'll have approval of bills from June 30th through July 10th and July 14th through July 28th.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the bills from June 30th to July 10th in the amount of $757,304.61 and from July 14th to the 28th of this year in the amount of $2,048,385.67, subject to the comptroller.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience has anything to say? Now would be the time to stand up. Yep, come on up.
Oh, we haven't got our handy overhead tonight. Thank you. You can always depend on the police to help you out. I'm William Hanson. It's a pleasure this evening to meet with you, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to review just briefly some information that we will find on the, actually, this is the committed net position hydroanalysis. And actually, I'd like to take my two minutes to go through the total document here and explain it as I understand it, but we probably won't do that tonight. It's a little bit like the, one of my friends who was a graduate student in mathematics. Dr. Goff was his professor here years ago, and he said, sometime during my master's thesis defense, Dr. Goff is going to ask, why is that so? He says, I will respond by saying, why is a deep philosophical question that we don't have time to adequately address today, and is that so? Yes. He did get his master's, so I don't think he used that line. The few lines that I want to talk about here tonight are the way the hydros contribute to the city budget, and they do that in three different ways. There's a total hydraulic depreciation line that comes from the income that we generate with the sale of electricity. There's a pilot calculation that's listed, and the pilot calculation is an equivalent to taxes, actually, that's charged to the hydros as if they were a commercial enterprise. And then they have, of course, what you understand as the generation revenues. In those three ways, the total hydraulic depreciation is $240, or $24,468. Pilot calculation is $15,700. Generation revenues last year were $32,409. So the total contribution to the city budget, including those three expenses, is $72,573. Comparing, that's the total budget contribution. If you would have purchased and sold that, that amount of power, you would have generated a revenue of $34,000 from the purchased power and sale. So the loss to the city budget from purchasing power rather than using the hydros was $38,000. In addition to that number, the hydros provided $104,000 last year to the city corridor planning process, which would be in addition to the $72,000 which they provided last year. Your hydros are a very profitable, viable part of your city budget, contribute positively to your city budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. Is there anybody else in the audience has anything to stand up? Come on up. You just sign in and.
Thanks for taking my time today. I'm not prepared. I'm not going to lie. I found out about this meeting yesterday. And it's a silly subject compared to what you guys are dealing with on a normal basis, I understand, but it's kind of affected me and others for the last four or five years. I'm a business owner here in town, and I like to put up signs on property that I deal with, within the city ordinance. Last four years, five years now, I feel like, I feel like my signs are getting tampered with, and I'm getting picked on by a couple people at the, at the city hall. And I get that they have an ordinance to uphold. I get that. But the problem that I'm having is when my signs are in the ordinance area, off the boulevard, in the, out of the triangles, and I find them on the ground a day after I talked to someone from the city, I find that very, very disturbing, especially when my signs are set up right next to other companies, and they're not taken down. I understand that ordinances are ordinances, laws are laws, but I feel like I'm getting singled out. At the end of the day, all I'm asking for is maybe to change the ordinance a little bit across the board, but most importantly, maybe during River Falls days. That's a time for all business owners, including the city, to advertise what we have to offer. And when I've lived here for 38 years, my family's been here for seven generations, and I can't even put up a sign outside of the boulevard, and they get tampered with at 10:30 at night on a weekend, that bothers me. And I've got other family that are also getting tampered with on Sundays. I mean, like I said, there's signs that are standing in, obvious, or that are against the ordinances. I guess at the end of the day, like I said, I want to change the ordinance. I don't know if that's possible. But from you guys, I need to know what you need from me to change that. It's almost a game at this point, and I don't have time to play games. So I get, that's, that's all I've got. But it's kind of important to me. And realistically, during River Falls days, don't you guys want to show everybody that don't live here what we have to offer? Makes sense to me. But on a Saturday night of River Falls days, when my signs are getting taken out, and they're just laying them on the ground, they're taking the metal stakes. I've caught them on camera at BP, North Main Street. I went through the entire town. My signs were the only ones that were tampered with. It happens to be that I had a phone call with the guy that day. I mean, it's, I have no hard proof, but it's, it's pretty blatant. So what is it that you guys need for me to change this?
Well, thanks for your input, Nick. I'll, I'll, I'll get ahold of you.
Perfect.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate your time, guys.
Yep. Okay, anybody else? Any comments? Yep, come on up.
All right. Well, I'm Kevin Moore at the Police Department here. I just wanted to take the time to say thank you to everybody. It was our, honor for us to be able to come here and present the colors to everybody. Meant a lot to me. I know it means a lot to our Chief of Police. So I just wanted to take the time, let everybody know how we feel, and hope you have a great meeting.
Thanks. You guys did a great job. Um, okay, next. Or anybody else? Otherwise, we'll move on to an update from River Falls. Our Chancellor Dean Van Galen will give us a little update. They're supposed to be marching band. I don't, they must be late.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor Tolan. Appreciate the opportunity to speak to the City Council this evening and provide you with some updates on your university, UW River Falls. And the comment I'll make to begin with is one of appreciation for the way this city and the university work together well, work through issues, and support one another in so many ways. So I really appreciate that. That isn't always the case in cities that have universities in their community. So I really appreciate that. I want to give you some updates, beginning with our strategic plan. And I know the city has its own strategic plan, but it's very important, of course, for an organization to have a roadmap of what they're trying to do. And our roadmap is pathway to distinction. We are in year six of this eight-year strategic plan with three goals: academic excellence, global engagement, and innovation and partnerships. And I'd like to provide you some progress reports, if you will, in each of these three areas. Certainly, the heart of any great university is the way our faculty and staff support, mentor, and help our students succeed. And I think we are a very student-centered university. We have many academic programs, very strong programs. Our largest majors at this point, the largest major on campus, is animal science. We've seen quite a bit of growth in that area the last few years: business administration, biology, and elementary education. We also try to be agile and think about what programs our students are interested in, and what programs the broader state and region are interested in. We launched some new programs in the last three years: undergraduate degrees in data science, agricultural engineering, and neuroscience. And you see some data there that's actually almost a year old in terms of how those programs are growing. I think they're off to a very good start, and we're seeing some strong interest among prospective students. Part of this is an effort to recruit enrolled students to come to River Falls, perhaps over some other institutions within the UW, and that seems to be working. Another goal is global education. We have a deep history at River Falls in encouraging our students to study abroad. For many, it's their first time in an airplane, their first time abroad, and really a life-changing experience. This data is from a recent survey, the National Survey of Student Engagement, for the 11 UW comprehensive campuses. The question is, among the seniors, have you had a study abroad experience? So about a quarter of our students have had that experience. You can see we're ranked just behind Eau Claire in terms of percent of students who've, who've studied abroad. It's really a strong commitment from our university. We want to continue to grow those opportunities for our students. Also, the city of River Falls hosts all of our students, including international students. Last fall, we had 135 students from about 22 different countries, and I just wanted to show you where those, many of those students are from. China is our leading source of international students, many students from Asia, as you can see, and I believe they have a great experience in the city of River Falls and our campus. I hear many, many positive remarks, how they feel that this is home, and it's a friendly and welcoming place, and that's something we all need to continue to, to work on. A great success story, a great partnership with River Falls City, the River Falls EDC, the St. Croix Valley Business Innovation Center. I really want to thank the council. I want to thank Scott Simpson for being one of the catalysts in this project. It's off to a very good start, and of course, there was a grand opening on April 12th. I believe Mayor Tolan was in the front row looking very good there for that event. So many of you were there. It was a great celebration. Enrollment. So as the city, you're probably interested in what, what are the trends? What's going on with enrollment at the university? We've seen a lot of growth in our new freshman enrollment, especially the last three years. Overall, we've had our enrollment decline, and now it is on the way back up. So over the last three years, you can see we've brought in some larger freshman classes. Last year's class of 1,325 freshmen was the largest in eight years. And within the UW system, that is actually the largest growth over a three-year period among any of the UW campuses. So you see some information there. 31% growth in our freshman class over that three-year period, and, you know, other numbers for other UW campuses. So that is really good news in many ways. If we project our headcount enrollment out the last, the next several years, you can see last fall, we were at 6,110 overall students, and we're projecting that to grow to about 65 or 6,600 students in three years. So that's a result of larger incoming freshman classes. We're also working very hard on retaining those students and helping them succeed. So, you know, those numbers, we won't hit them on the head, but the trend is clearly there, and we feel confident about that. Facilities updates. A lot of progress and good news there, and you've seen some of it in, as residents of River Falls. The Rodley Hall renovation, this is a facility that was built in the 1960s, former dining hall. We anticipate construction to begin next month. So bids have been accepted, and we're moving forward on that. Couple of images of the new interior of Rodley Hall, which will house a number of student support functions, including admissions, career services, and others. This project will be completed, we anticipate, at the end of next year, 2019, and many functions that are now scattered around campus will move into Rodley Hall. And another image of that building. So if you had a dining experience in Rodley Hall, it's going to be much, much different, as you can see. Also, Abbott Concert Hall will be renovated, a $1.3 million renovation that will take place this fall. We will have new electrical, lighting, accusal, fixed seating, and new orchestra pit. That facility was constructed in 1973, so really needed upgrade, exciting project for the university and the community. The dairy pilot plant renovation is now underway after a great deal of planning. This will renovate the facility where we make Falcon Foods cheese and ice cream, really one of our signature facilities on our campus. We've had tremendous support from especially businesses and corporations. We have a Dairy Pilot Plant Advisory Council. Each of these companies or corporations have gifted at least $100,000 to the project. In all, we're at about $2.67 million in gifts to renovate that project, which will benefit our students, but also benefit these businesses and industries who want to hire the talent that is produced in that pilot plant. And then my last section is a bit about public investment. We are a state public university, and while tuition dollars have become more and more important over time, that public support is really very, very important. So we look ahead now to the next biennial state budget. So the governor will propose that budget in early of next year, and we're developing a system of requests and advocacy, including faculty-staff compensation. More to follow, but really, I want to spend a few minutes talking about a request to the State of Wisconsin for a new Science and Technology Innovation Center, science facilities on our campus. Now, you may recall that the Falcon Center took 24 years to open from conception. We're hoping for a little brisker timeline on this, but we're underway. This is a project that will provide a new science facility. The second part of this longer-term vision is to renovate Egg Science and Centennial Hall. We conducted a feasibility study to look at all of these options. This was funded by Jeff and Christie Serna House, River Falls residents, chemistry graduates, class of 93, so we're grateful for that. The outcome of that feasibility study indicated that the best plan was as a first step to construct a new science facility on the current site of Hagstedt Hall. Okay, so when this comes to fruition, Hagstedt will, will come down. That facility will house chemistry, physics, biology, psychology, and neuroscience, about 72,000 net square feet. It will be instructional laboratories, everything from introductory biology to organic chemistry. There'll be 32 undergraduate research spaces. So as you may know, this is a major emphasis, emphasis at the university, engaging our students with faculty on undergraduate research. There will be faculty offices, support spaces, and then also a pretty innovative, I think, space where the university can collaborate with businesses and industry in terms of maker spaces, perhaps shared visiting faculty positions, engaging students in projects from the private sector. So this is kind of a new way of thinking about part of this new facility. We've had significant growth in STEM and health programs as a university. You see the growth in terms of the percent and number of our students majoring in STEM and health programs over the last few years. And this may or may not surprise you, but among the 13 UW campuses, we graduate the fourth highest percent of students in STEM fields behind Pladville, Madison, and Stevens Point. So we have a lot of strength in STEM and related to that agriculture as a campus. This facility would have huge impacts, not just for majors in science and related fields, but of course, many of our students would take courses in those disciplines in the new, the new building. This is the number-one capital project that the university has proposed to UW System. They have ranked it very strongly, it turns out. The Board of Regents will be voting on that ranking and that proposal to the State of Wisconsin later this month in August. So looking down the road, we know that advocacy will really be critical. This facility will transform our campus, it'll transform the community, and really provide some new opportunities, I think, for our community, businesses, and others to interact with the campus, our students and our faculty. So thinking back, the council provided a very strong statement of support a year or so ago for the biennial budget, and I would like to ask you, in the coming weeks, to consider such a statement in support of our Science and Technology Innovation Center. It really makes a difference, and I think support from the community, from the region, business leaders, obviously legislators, will all be absolutely essential to move this project along through, through the process. So I would ask your consideration of that. So a lot of exciting things, I think, going on at UW River Falls, and I really want to end my comments by, again, thanking you. It is a, a great partnership that I appreciate very much, and I know our faculty, staff, and students appreciate what you do as well. So thank you, and I'd be happy to take any comments or ask, answer any questions.
A couple of things. I know that the times that we've talked and the presentations I've seen you present, you talk a lot about River Falls having a lot of first-generation students. Can you remind me again where you, where we rank in the UW system with first-generation students?
About 43% of our students, freshmen, are first-generation students. I haven't seen a statistic lately I would say that would place us in the top third or highest third among UW's.
Sure.
Also, I've, there's some kind of now older data that shows in general, our students come from families of relatively modest means in terms of family, family income. And it's an exciting part of our mission because college is new to many of these students and their families. It's so important to support them with that transition, and when they're engaged in opportunities like research, study abroad, it's really transformational. So we're proud of serving students who, who come here for great opportunities.
Sure. And I know that the, the Rise to Distinction Dinner that you do benefits those, those first-time students, and they, I know they, they put on, I've been able to attend some of those. One other quick question, if I could. You mentioned the international students, and, and it looks like they're kind of distributed pretty evenly around Asia there, but is there an area of focus that they're, that they're majoring in, or is it pretty much across the board? Is it, I know that there's been some education majors coming over.
Yes.
Can you speak to that a little bit?
So education is a major focus. We have a program that brings students from China, from Zhizhang International Studies University. I just learned this morning, we're expecting 14 students from that institution. They spend one year here, and then it's their sophomore year, essentially. They spend time in the River Falls and Hudson School Districts, working with our teachers, with those students. Great cultural experience for everyone involved. So that's a major source. Also, we send to, tend to attract students in business administration, but it's really across, across the spectrum of things. We have partnerships in Germany related to communications and media studies. But I would say education, business, agriculture, just going back a few years, we had 280 students from Brazil.
Yeah.
As part of that country's program, most of those were studying agriculture. Brazil has discontinued that program, but, but there was a lot of Portuguese spoken in River Falls there for a few years.
And then I've got one last question, and then I'll stop hogging the time from my other fellow members. But I know there's been some changes and some refocusing of the foundation and how that's, that's being managed. Could you speak to that just really briefly?
Yes. So as you probably know, our foundation is a 501(c)(3) entity that accepts charitable gifts. And I think in part because of some issues that occurred at Oshkosh, the UW System encouraged us to look at the degree of independence of that foundation from the university. And so I and others have worked with our foundation board to better demonstrate that independence. So one way to do that is formerly, our Assistant Chancellor for University Advancement was also, as a state employee, president of the foundation. And that's probably not a best practice. So that position has been split. We are hiring a new president of the foundation. And so, and those foundation individuals will be foundation employees. They will run the business function of the foundation, and then, of course, we'll have advancement or fundraising and alumni relations staff. They will be university employees. So it's really just an effort to, to demonstrate better independence between the university and its foundation, which really is a good practice.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate the time.
Chancellor, I have one quick question. What's been the amount of support for nanotechnology at the college?
We have some faculty to do some research that's related, but it's certainly not a, a major emphasis of our, of our institution. So that's kind of the, the bottom line.
Mr. Chancellor.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. In the, the new science hall, and advocating for the new science hall with the Board of Regents, is there a way for individuals to advocate? Is there a social media platform or email, or how could individuals, how could we share within our personal networks? within our personal networks how to advocate for this facility?
So that is coming. The Board of Regents meets in August, and if they do indeed recommend the project, and in doing so, they would recommend planning money for 2019, '21, and also something called advanced enumeration, which would essentially commit the funds for construction in '21, '23. So we are working on a broader advocacy plan that you will see in the next month, I would say.
Excellent.
And there'll be lots of opportunities for individuals, entities to advocate directly with legislators, the Regents, and others. So it's coming, and thank you for the question.
Absolutely, thank you.
Anybody else?
Real quick, if we were to show our support through another resolution, what's the deadline?
I think it would be wonderful to have that resolution considered and potentially passed by August 23rd. So that would coincide with the beginning of school, it would coincide with any action by the Board of Regents, and it would be a great time to kind of launch that effort. Thank you.
More of a statement than questions. I think it'd be great for us to throw any support behind a resolution we can for you guys, you do so much for the city. And, you know, kind of going back to the international stuff, I know that's a growing thing for you guys, and I've met a lot of these students firsthand. They've come to see me at City Hall and that, and I've always been amazed how, what's the word I'm looking for, how intuitive they are, how much they want to learn, and how excited they are about being here. It's not, they don't come here just because, oh, I want to see the States and do all sorts of cool things. They actually want to come here, they want to learn about our community, they want to learn about the area, and find out how we do things over there. So it's been a real pleasure meeting a lot of these students. And the people you guys have worked with them are wonderful, too. So you guys do a great job with that.
I appreciate that, and they add so much to our campus and community, so thank you.
Yeah. Okay, anybody else? No? Thanks, Chancellor, we appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on, we'll do Consent Agenda. Number one is acknowledgement of the following minutes, the River Falls Housing Authority from 6:13 and 6:28, the River Falls Library Board from 6:04, the Park and Rec Advisory Board from 6:20, Utility Advisory Board from 6:18. Next one is a resolution approving lease with River Falls Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. This would extend the lease agreement to, for three more years through December of 2021. Next one is a resolution for variance of on-street parking for Rice Baking. This would extend the parking variance for Rice Baking on Troy Street. Next one is a resolution approving the 2018, 2019 property and casualty insurance renewal. This resolution will renew our city's property and casual insurances with travelers for 2018, 2019, and the renewal premium is approximately 8,000 less than the current premium, plus we'll have increased coverage. Another one is a resolution regarding polling place for November 2018 election. This resolution would approve changes to the polling locations for voters in District 1, Ward 5, and District 3. This change would remove the Hoffman Park Shelter as a city polling location, effective with the November 6, 2018 election. And the last one is a resolution approving launch LLC development agreement. Does anybody want to poll everything?
Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Would like to poll number seven.
Number seven, hang on a second.
Polling place.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to poll Consent Agenda item number four.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll take a...
Mr. Mayor, I approve approval of Consent Agenda 3, A through D, 5, 6, and 8.
Second.
Any more questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Well, let's start with four. Mr. Dowell, you polled number four.
Resolution approving lease with River Falls Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau. I noticed that there is no security deposit for the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm curious why that is. I think it would look better to have a security deposit than to have a potential lawsuit. So who could I direct this question towards?
Well, just my opinion, I don't think there's a lot of risk that they're going to damage the building. Is that what you were thinking for security, or that they wouldn't come through on rent?
In general, sometimes it's hard to figure out if something were to happen, who's responsible, who the buck stops with.
Well, the city has insurance on the building, so I just don't foresee anything that would come up that would require a security deposit for them. It's up to the council, of course, but I wouldn't recommend it.
No. I think we're fine.
I had the benefit of being on the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. In fact, I was the president at the time that we moved into the chamber space. The Chamber also maintains their own renters' insurance and liability coverage, so from that standpoint, I guess I would tend to agree with Julie and the staff that I don't think a security deposit's necessary. If something were to happen, I think we can track them down. I think we know where to find them. So I'd be in favor of as-is.
So we've never had a problem with that before then either, so, okay. Well, thank you for the feedback. Mr. Mayor, I move approval for Consent Agenda item number four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Mr. Morrissey, you polled number seven.
I polled number seven. Recently, last Monday, we were at a joint school board, city council meeting, and this topic did come up of polling places. I'm not looking to, you know, cause the school district any heartburn here, but I know I got feedback about the Hoffman Park polling place. I'm sure my other fellow council members got it. It was not the ideal spot. I think I supported the move there to see how that would work, and it didn't work out. So while we're moving it again, I always, always have concern about moving polling places and causing voter confusion, and I know in the past I've asked staff about what they've done to make sure the voters of those districts know where their polling place is, and I believe, I'm confident, we're going to do the same things here. But again, this is not the city moving on a whim, or this is not the city leaving the original location at the middle school where we were. The school district is determined that they, it just doesn't work for them there anymore, so we have to find another place. So it's more of anything, it's just a kind of a statement to the public that, you know, we're trying to work this out as best we can, we're trying to do the right things, and when we have something that doesn't work, we agree to change it. So with that, I don't know if anybody else has any comments.
And I represent District 3, and I want to thank the city clerk and the staff for responding to the comments that we did get. And I think the solution that they've come up with is pretty reasonable, and I hope that it's going to work out well. I respect the school district's decision. You know, it was less than six weeks, I think, after they made that decision that there was another school shooting in Florida. And, you know, you just can't, to me, I just can't, you know, question their commitment to the safety of the students, and this is an issue for them, and unfortunately, we're the ones that are inconvenienced. But overall, I like the fact that we're continuing to work towards, hopefully, finding a solution here, and I think for my district, City Hall is a good place, and I appreciate it.
I was happy to see that District 1 would be at the library, and that both parts of it, being in Pierce and St. Croix, would be represented in the same building, so I think this is a common-sense move. I had cautioned about the park before, simply because I knew the amount of construction. So I think the facilities for both are going to be excellent, and I think the public's going to really be happy about this decision. Thank you.
Yep. Hopefully this works. We don't have a lot of options for that. We just don't. I mean, the school can't work with us over there, and the Army can't work with us, so we don't have a lot of options. So hopefully this should work out pretty good for everybody.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve resolution regarding polling places for the November 2018 election.
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, next is a resolution approving the 2018, 2022 strategic plan, and City Administrator Mr. Simpson will give us a little presentation.
I think my staff is suggesting that I need readers, but this is, this is a small screen.
Happens to the best of us.
I just keep saying, I am a young man, I am a young man. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity to present. This is, should be a little anticlimactic because we certainly have had some good discussion on this, but I want to give the council an opportunity for, to kind of review what we have discussed, and what staff and the consultant have placed in draft form for you to review. So certainly, there is still time for the council, should you choose to modify this draft to do so. But we've presented a package, kind of complete package, that would provide a strategic plan for the next four years, as we've discussed. So during this year, we've met, the council and executive team met and set out a planning process, a big part of which was a workshop that we held to try to set the course for guiding this city. We've operated under the assumption that if everything's a priority, then nothing is a priority. In order for us to have success as a community, we do have to select where we put our time and resources. That means saying no to things that are good ideas and could move the community forward in favor of things that we think will have the best benefit long-term for the community. And sometimes we make short-term decisions based on things that we think are necessary to do in a short period. But the recognition of this plan is that we do need, as a community, as a council, as a city organization, to have some understanding of what we will focus our energy in. We do so in a pretty significantly aggressive fashion. We've worked with a couple consultants on strategic planning, we've done some of the strategic planning on our own with our own staff, and certainly we've discussed with our peers in other communities, and I think some of you have discussed with your peers and other council members. And so there's a basic understanding that we make big plans in River Falls, and we aggressively pursue them. And we certainly have a strategic plan that has a number, as far as quantity, many more things than a lot of plans of similar-sized communities. And we're okay with that. We tend to attract staff, that that is something that they enjoy being part of. Certainly, I think all of you have demonstrated in your time on the council that you enjoy being part of an organization that gets things done and makes big plans, and so that seems to be working out pretty well for us, given the success we've had together. We've settled on four strategic priorities. Those are themes or things that we can keep in mind as we're doing our work every day. One is connected community, the second is economic vitality, third is financial sustainability, and of course, quality municipal services. And for each of those areas, and this isn't intended for you to read every item that's on here, but the city council has directed us for what kind of desired outcomes they would like for each of those four areas. In the case of connected community, which is shown here, you've identified some desired outcomes. What does that mean to you? What do you want to happen? What do you want people to understand? And one is an engaged community. The second is effective communications with the citizens. And the third desired outcome in this connected community priority is progress on the Kinnick Corridor Plan. So those are the three things the council has said. These are the three things in this area that we really want you to focus on. We understand that that might mean other things that could contribute to connected community are not going to be our primary focuses. We've identified key outcome indicators in those areas together, established some, drafted some targets based in part on direct feedback you provided us in the workshop, and then in part on follow-up afterwards, where we've worked with the consultant to say, well, I heard this from the council, is this what we think we meant? And then we've tried to place that into a target. So for example, effective communication with the citizens, the key outcome indicator is the citizen's survey results. The target would be that 70% of residents say they get their city info from the city communication toolbox. If we're doing all these things to communicate with them, is that actually where they're getting their information from? That's how we were going to try to measure the effectiveness. And then within the whole connected community area, and this carries forward on each of the four priorities, then I have helped establish strategic initiatives with you, based on your feedback in the workshop, one-on-one, and then also with executive team and department members, to say, what does that mean? What are we actually, what's the project, the service, the thing that we're going to focus on? So for example, we're going to look at a new board recruitment strategy, and how do we generate interested parties on serving on committees and boards in the community? How are we going to use the new applications that are out there in social media and digital environment to engage with the community? Obviously, the Kinnick Corridor Plan is a deliverable, there is a plan that we want to deliver. Setting up a public-private partnership for the Kinnick Corridor is a deliverable. We want to establish some baselines in citizen contacts, collect kind of how are we touching all of the community members through the various communication platforms, so that we can measure going forward, using some new tools and kind of expanding the social media toolbox. I don't plan to go in that level of detail with each of these areas. You've all received a full report from staff and the consultant, but I wanted to try to walk you through at least the first one to remind you of what we've established as a group. The next is economic vitality, and you've asked us to focus on thriving corporate parks, housing that supports our economic objectives, and a clear economic development strategy. And then we've got key outcome indicators, targets, and strategic initiatives in each of those in that area. The next is financial sustainability. This is the area that probably has varied the least in the various forms and different formats, when we went from a work plan to a strategic plan to now a renewal. It's been fairly consistent. We want to keep our eye on being prepared for financial contingencies, you know, don't count your chickens, so to speak, let's get prepared. Be prepared for the worst, but enjoy the benefit of not being in a situation where we're dealing with the worst. We want to have diverse revenue sources. Essentially, we do not trust the state of Wisconsin to provide us the substance that we need to produce the services that we have. So we've made lots of efforts over time to focus our revenue sources on the people that are using those services directly, and trying to kind of provide some independence. We certainly benefit from our partnership with the state, but it's something that we're trying not to rely on. And then one primary mechanism to rate, or be rated by third parties is credit rating, so we've done quite well on there. The things that we've added that are of note, I think, is the streetlight utility implementation as a deliverable strategic initiative. And you'll see there's two business plans. So we've done rotating business plans in our enterprise, or proprietary, or business-like businesses, our operations. And so sewer and water will both get a completed business plan, and that kind of sets forward how the business can be operated going forward from a financial sustainability standpoint. And finally, but obviously not least, is quality municipal services. What does that mean? It means satisfied citizens. It means people appreciate and like and are satisfied with what services they're receiving. It means reviewing our services regularly. We don't just do the same thing over and over and over again and expect good outcomes. We're constantly reviewing that. It means adequate response to meet the service demand. We're a growing community. We haven't been a very growing organization, staff-wise. We've certainly had a growing budget, we've certainly used technology and other things to help us augment service delivery. We've even reduced or eliminated some services so that we could put our resources into other services that we wanted to continue. And the council has certainly reflected in their discussions at several meetings and through the workshop that we are not driving always to the low cost, we're focused on service level and trying to sustain that, and as you add new people and new square miles of city, and new linear footage of sidewalk, or trails, or new parks and playgrounds, that we have to be able to meet that service demand. We don't want to add and do it worse and worse on the service level. And then we, something that I think the council should be very proud of, because it's something you'll get very little pats on the back for, so staff will certainly want to help you, give you that pat on the back, is sustained capital investment in public infrastructure, taking care of what we do... Taking care of what we do, leaving things better than you found them, at least as good as you found them, but the goal would be to leave things better than you found them. Oftentimes, that infrastructure is things that people do not notice. It's pipes in the ground, it's benches at playgrounds, it's, you know, bolts and nuts and playground equipment. It's maintaining the equipment that we need, the infrastructure we need, pumps and motors that people just don't see because they're in buildings. So that's something that you've made a good commitment, and we hear you loud and clear. I do want to touch a little bit on mission, vision, and value statements. Again, this is in the report. The council and staff have had some learyness about spending hours and hours wordsmithing a vision, values, mission statement. We have had some success over time, though, identifying that. I think we've had some shared vision, values. We haven't always put that in writing, although some of the values we had put in writing through our customer service model. And so I think there was a general agreement that, okay, it's time for us to get things put in writing. And then you certainly gave staff the ability to kind of take what you said and try to craft those. So like I said, we kind of worked on the values that we had. We use that as the core and work towards the mission and vision, which may seem a little bit backwards, but I don't believe it is. Mission statement is to coordinate and deliver essential services and ensure a sustainable future. And certainly, the reason that we talk about coordinating and delivery instead of just saying deliver essential services is we have acknowledged as an organization that we can't do everything, and that it isn't our job as a city organization to do every service, that we help coordinate the basic essential services. And those might be provided by nonprofits, not-for-profits, privates, other governmental agencies. But certainly, the council can be an advocate for what is the mix of services that citizens expect. We don't always assume that that means we have to deliver it. So there is a nuance there in our, that's a little bit different. Vision statement is a distinct vibrant and safe community. We heard those three things a lot from the city council, right? That we don't want to just be Chainsville, USA, where we look and feel the same as every other community. We want to have that, be that distinct community where people think of River Falls and they have images in their heads. Vibrant, obviously economically vibrant, physically vibrant, and safety. And when we ask you all, and we ask people new to the community and been here a long time, they usually talk about two things. The abundance of nature, the ability to be close to and in the natural environment, and easy access to metropolitan amenities, both that we provide through services, the county provides, but obviously, the services that are available in the Minneapolis-St. Paul metro, which we are part of. And then we talked about a place where families, students, and businesses flourish. And students obviously has a special meaning in River Falls. There's a high value placed on K through 12. You've seen that in the citizen surveys that we've taken repeatedly. But we are also a host to significant educational institutions. And so students, we are constantly hosting a new batch of students, welcoming those folks in, and so we thought that was important as part of the vision statement. I'm going to work through this quickly, and I understand you might have questions or comments about that. I'm happy to take those. I want to get to the values. The values are really these six items that we put out. Four of these were kind of verbatim from our customer service model. And then we pulled from both our old strategic initiative section and some things that we talked about specifically in the workshop to come up with these six values. And these are things that we ask the employees to think about in their interactions and their work. And then also, this is obviously things that the council would ask itself to reflect on when making policy decisions in the community. We put people first. We embrace change. We pursue excellence. We act with integrity. We serve our community, and we consider future generations. And you might see some of those in all city value statements. I think what we have really emphasized in particular, that's a little bit unique, is we do embrace change here. I think the city council and the community has said, "What's the next thing?" There isn't necessarily an embracing of the status quo in River Falls. That's not our DNA, community DNA. And certainly, you've put your money and resources where your mouth is on considering future generations. We are often spending money and time on things that may not provide an immediate benefit to those in the chairs that you're in today. It's something that we want to set forward for future generations. And you have enjoyed previous councils making wise decisions about things so that they're not laying problems in your lap to solve going forward. So I think that really reflects the values that the community's had. The last thing I want to talk about was talked about very briefly. I think it's worth mentioning, because it's always like, well, the struggle of resources is you just, it's not unlimited. So we have so many resources. We set these priorities, and then we set service levels for each of these things. So certainly, you can have different levels of service and disruption for different things that we put out there. An example would be on our street maintenance program. You could wait until the streets completely erode and then do a complete reconstruction. The service level starts out really good. It degrades over time. It gets really bad, and then we fix it and make it really good again. And then in the service levels that we've chosen to do is kind of sustained investments. We typically don't let things go to that really bad service level. But we have a lot of things that we may maintain a medium service level for a long time in order to put our money in other areas. So we talked a little bit about that in the workshop. I thought it was worth mentioning just that, you know, they say, so to speak, the organizational consultants say that there's only so many ways you can operate a business. You're, you go for operational excellence. You go for, which is, you know, Walmart is the example that's given often, which is, let's just get really good at getting things in consumers' hands at the lowest possible cost as fast as we can. And we're going to do it, repeat it over and over again. McDonald's used to be an example of that, where if you get a cheeseburger at McDonald's, it's going to taste the same at every McDonald's, and we're going to be really good at getting that beef from the farm to the fryer, and that's operational excellence. Product and service leadership is the ooh and ah. You know, we want to be, the example there, a lot of times, is Apple. You know, we're going to give, people are willing to pay $1,000 for a phone. They might be able to buy a $600 or $500 phone that does about 90% of what the Apple phone does. But, you know, I personally have an Apple phone, and it's the ooh and ah factor, and it's just their customers are dazzled with the service they get. And then the last is customer intimacy, and that is really kind of knowing your customer, identifying that. A lot of times, there's retail, which I'm really bad at giving retail examples as a mostly non shopper. But the stores that you go in and say, "Here I am, and this is, tell me what I need based on what you know about me," and you walk out with clothes and products and other things that are to your needs. So sometimes telling the customer what they don't know they need and getting that. So those are kind of the value propositions. There's always a warning that if you try to do all of those things, you're going to be in trouble. If you try to pick two of those things, you're going to be in trouble that you really should just focus on what you do. The couple cautionary tales that I would say for public services is, we provide about 60 different businesses. So we have some operational excellence businesses. We have some ooh and ah businesses, or portions of our businesses that are ooh and ah. And we have some that are customer intimacy, where we really work with those customers to try to meet their needs. Economic development is one of those areas where I think we do some of that. And so it's hard to paint with a broad brush, but I think what we had resolved as a group was operational excellence is kind of the forefront for us. We really want, we value consistency. You can change the services around, so that's not the consistency we're talking about. But what we're saying is, once we decide on a service that we want to provide, we expect it to be pretty good and pretty consistent and pretty equitable across the community. So operational excellence is really that focus, I think, over time. So driving down prices, trying to get a good value for the money that's put in. But we are a small community. People value that, customer intimacy. They value being able to come in in person and talk to someone, a councilperson, a city staff person about their problems. And really, that's a customer intimacy model. If we had operational excellence as our number one, we wouldn't even have ours at City Hall. You know, it would be dial this 800 number, deal with this on your website. And that's really the operational excellence. So as a city government, I suspect we'll never fully move away from that customer intimacy because at the end of the day, that's kind of the relationship that people expect from their government. So we're always straddling that. People say, "Why can't you do this? Why can't you come to my house and pick this up? Why can't we add this service?" And we're always battling that. We've got this big, broad operational excellence to do. And yes, we do want to think about your particular situation and try to help you out when we can. So that concludes the presentation. We hope the city council will look favorably on adopting this resolution, and we certainly are willing to speak to any of the things included or any comments or changes that you'd like to make. And that would be at your prerogative. So I stand ready for questions.
You want to get any questions?
I do have a comment.
Yep.
Very quick one. We had a power outage at our home about a week ago, a week and a half ago. So I called the city. Within about 45 minutes, they were there. And within about an hour, they had us back up and running. And I didn't even tell them I'm sitting next to Kevin at the council meetings. So we were very impressed, and they followed up and came back and took care of some things later, but we were back up and running real quick. So thank you for that.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion then.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the resolution adopting the 2018-2022 strategic plan.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. On that subject, we'll switch over to Carrie Schreiner, our management analyst, who's going to give us a little update on the 2018 second quarter strategic plan update.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, now that you've just passed the new one, this will be the final update on the first strategic plan. So it was first adopted in 2015, and there is a total of five strategic plan goals. So we'll go through those quickly. So the first is ensuring financial sustainability. And as you can see, four out of the, or three out of the four targets are being met. And I just wanted to mention, to go along with the maintaining an excellent credit rating, Moody's Investor Service just reaffirmed the city's AA2 bond rating last month. The second goal is consistently delivering quality municipal services. I went over this year, the citizen survey targets are being met, and really, all the targets in this goal are currently being met. Promoting economic vitality is the third goal. And the total building permits at the end of the second quarter for this year were a little over 15 million. So that really exceeds the targets that we have put up there. And then as well, at the end of the second quarter, the assessed value in the Sterling Ponds Corporate Park was 18.2 million. So that also meets and exceeds the targets. Connecting community members is focused on gathering places and spaces. And in April, city council, you awarded Ross and Associates the bid for constructing the Glen Park Pavilion Building. It's hard to say. And construction is going to be starting on that after Labor Day. And then the rest of the park renovations is expected to begin in spring 2019 and completed in the fall, next fall. And finally, we have considering future generations. So we continue to be number one in the state and number five nationally for customer participation and purchasing renewable energy. So like I said, this is the last update on the first strategic plan. We will present, or staff will present, updates on the new 2018-2022 strategic plan. Do you have any questions?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, just kind of a general question, and maybe you're not able to answer this. But now that we've been through, you know, the first five-year strategic plan, has it been useful for staff?
Yeah, I think staff has used it as a planning tool on what to work on, what council sees as the target areas. And I personally, as staff, I think it's been helpful, yes. I don't want to speak for all staff at the first, but yes.
Thank you.
I think so. Thank you.
Carrie, can you refresh my memory? When was the last citizen survey, and when's the next one?
So the last citizen survey was in 2017, and we do them every other year. So 2019 will be the next one.
Coming up next year.
Yep.
My other question is, I really like the infrastructure scorecard.
Yes.
Is that going away, or what are we doing there with that? Is that up above, and I missed it?
The infrastructure scorecard is included as part of the just past strategic.
Okay. Sorry, I missed it.
Continue to enhance that tool as we can.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Carrie? No? Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we'll move on to another management analyst. Brent Johnson's going to give us an update on the RFC TV that we're in the process of phasing out.
Well, currently, we're doing a report of it tonight, and we're going to be asking for your feedback and discussion. But again, I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight and letting us speak as well. So in November of last year, council asked staff to conduct further analysis of community usage of RFC TV. And since that meeting, staff has sought public input through several methods. So that included both online and paper surveys distributed to various locations throughout town, through print and social media, and slides that were included on channels 16 and 18. So the big thing that we did was we conducted the survey from April 3rd to May 15th of this year. And so that was distributed at City Hall, River Falls Public Library, the Housing Authority, senior apartments, local churches, area services on RFC TV, senior and assisted living facilities such as Wellhaven and Comforts of Home. And then we did it online as well. So the survey was broadcasted on RFC TV and appeared on the River Falls Journal and was posted on the city's Facebook page. And a quick note about the Facebook page, that post reached about 5,000 people and produced about 122 clicks on the survey link. And also, in addition, the survey was including the spring utility bill inserts and also the city source newsletter, which were sent to over 5,000 households as well. So we got about 357 respondents in total. So about 198 responded online, 159 responded by paper. And then participants were asked questions based on how much interaction they have with RFC TV, channel 16 and 18, along with their internet usage. And paper surveys were handed out and placed in the following locations. So First Congregational, Ezekiel Lutheran, St. Bridges Catholic Church, Servant and the Shepherd, Wellhaven, Comforts of Home, the Housing Authority, who then distributed those surveys to 167 residents in their senior housing units, River Falls City Hall and Library, and the American Association of University Women, River Falls branch. So included in your packets tonight, I also printed out one here. So were the results of the survey. And then from those results, we had a few key highlights. So the top three programs that respondents watched on RFC TV were parades and other events, which are about 20% of total respondents, city council meetings, which again is about 20%, and church services. And then of note, too, with the parades and events, parades have not been updated in about two years. So would have been back in 2015, I would say. That was the last time that a parade was live broadcasted in that sense. And this year, we did, we broadcasted it on Facebook this year for live stream. Online respondents to the top three ways they received news about the city were from River Falls Journal at about 20%, the city's Facebook page at about 20%, and then the website at 60. percent, and then the website at sixteen percent. And paper respondents, this top three survey, or top three, were River Falls Journal at thirty percent, word of mouth at twenty-two percent, and RFC TV at fourteen percent. And then respondents from congregations and senior assisted living homes were about sixty percent of all paper respondents, with St. Bridget's Church making up about eighty percent of those total respondents. And then finally, those age seventy-year-old or had the highest participation rate in this survey were about thirty-one percent of total response. So that was about a hundred and ten out of three hundred and fifty-seven respondents. We tri, staff, we transferred over a program from channels eight, channel eighteen to sixteen in March of this year. And while that transition was occurring, slides were placed on those channels to instruct viewers and notify staff if they had questions, concerns, or comments about the future RFC TV. And as of today, so as of today, staff have not received any questions or comments regarding RFC TV. In addition, Heather Johnson, who's the Adult Services and Circulation Library at the library, brought along and talked about RF cables survey as part of her monthly program, and outreach services to community members living in Wellhaven, Kinnick Health and Rehab, Our House, yeah, and Comforts of Home in May. So during these visits in May, she interacted with approximately fifty to sixty people and received littlest no interest in those surveys, with some of the residents saying they did not have access to RFC TV and few knowing that it's even run by the city. Most of the residents in the care facilities that she visited do not have access to television and that they do, they're most, they most often watch the television in the community room of sorts. So the survey of viewers of RFC TV was completed as requested by the City Council last year. And the results don't really differ significantly from the information provided at that time and moving our resources to an alternative delivery of meetings and other programming, we still believe is recommended in order to reach a larger, larger audience. So with that said, feedback and discussion from the City Council is requested and we're here to take any, if you have any questions or had any comments, we're here to receive those tonight.
Any questions or comments?
Well, I'm happy to see that the, that the community's moral compass is pointed in the right direction because church services outpace city council meetings.
That's a good thing.
So that's a good statement, I think.
I, I would just like to thank you for the work in doing these surveys and your dogged persistence in trying to get feedback. I don't, it's not just you, it's the rest of the staff, but appreciate it.
I was going to say, had a lot of help from Mary. So she was real, go get her on that.
I am impressed. So thank you very much.
I agree. This gave me a much better picture of the usage of the, of the RFC TV and, and other channels, Facebook and, and the newspaper and so forth. So I feel like I have a much, you know, better basis on which to make a decision moving forward. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think.
Yep, go ahead.
I think we all kind of know that the TV broadcasting for the local broadcast is going away on channel sixteen. That's, that's definitely inevitable that we talked about last time. The concern that I faced last time is I've been in a lot of customers' homes in a role that I had as a technician and heard a lot of people's, not in River Falls, but other communities. And it's amazing, you know, I kind of lined up with what I had to say, you know, them seventy-plus, fifty-five and up ages, they don't, some of the seventy-year-olds don't have internet or they just don't have access to the local internets and of that, or they don't have computers, period. And I think the survey kind of answered to that key as well. The concern I have for those folks is, you know, there was, out of three hundred and fifty-seven surveyed, a hundred and ten of them said they were seventy-plus. You know, I mean, that's a pretty good subset of that survey. You'd say about what, about a third of the survey, maybe a little less?
Thirty-one percent.
Thirty-one percent, okay. And, you know, you look at where, how many of those actually use RFC TV? Ninety-four. That's a pretty good subset as well. I'm not saying that we keep the thing forever. I think we should have definitely a phasing period so we can say, hey, we did a survey. This is the survey results. Not something that we should probably shut down tomorrow or maybe even next month. You know, you say the first of the year, middle of next year, something like that. So these folks can start preparing and get, get internet, get, get something that's going to provide the parades, the candidate forums. You know, there was some feedback at the bottom of this thing and some of them was that they wanted to keep it, right? I mean, there was twenty-one people that said church services is important online, right? So you get people that are either shut in, they don't get out, or that's where they get their, their church services from. And I know there were some other areas that talked on that same basis, that they could go to the social media and YouTube and maybe some DVDs or something, you know? I run PowerPoint at my church. So that's, that's a huge topic where we, people want live broadcasts, people want it on MP3 off the website, stuff like that. So it's, it's definitely important to them. And I still get people that want hard copy CDs quite frequently, but we just, we don't provide it. So we're going away from that in the city now and I totally understand that. But I also want to make sure that we're taking care of them people and letting them know that, giving them a hard set date, saying, hey, you gotta find other means instead of just cutting them off. And you look at, on that same thing under the comments, twenty of them supported promote, keep, or update RFC TV. And that was kind of a compiled list, correct?
Yes, it was.
So many people, out of all the subsets, said that they wanted to keep it. And I'm sure twenty of them or twenty-one, twenty of the twenty-one on them two top layers, between church service is important and supporting of keeping are probably in the same boat. I just want to make sure that we're moving forward, that we have some kind of timeline there and sunset, period.
So if I might ask a question real quick. What's our next step? I would assume now that we've seen the report, staff will come back with a recommendation. I guess one of the, one of the things that I'd like staff to explore, I don't know how the rest of my council members feel about it, but one of the things I'd like staff to explore prior to bringing that recommendation back is the school district, the Chamber of Commerce, and the university to see if they are interested in taking over that channel and providing programming and so forth. If we can have that conversation, at least, if for nothing more than to check the box to say, hey, we've, we've looked at other partners in the community and, and they're not interested, or they are interested, maybe, I don't know. But that, that would be, that would be my feedback in anticipation of another report coming back.
So please don't anticipate another report.
Okay.
We do not.
We've decided.
Staff has not found that any of the survey results to be compelling to change the course. They appear to reinforce the fact that this is a little-used service, even by a very substantially skewed survey. I mean, very, very much, we took effort to get every person that we could that would be a fan of the TV state. Now, I'm speaking for myself and my, as I review the results. The next steps is we will not include broadcasting in the 2019 budget. So we will cease, my recommendation will be, we will cease providing that service no later than December thirty-first of this year, unless the council tonight would give us feedback that they want us to find a different course. It's just one of those tough things where we, we've, we've tried to answer the question as best we can about what is the value of the service. And obviously, it has value. There's, it has value. But we think the other outlets are better use of our resources, given the exact spot we're in. If you remember, the report back then said we would have to upgrade to digital formats and other things that, and we probably will do some of that anyways in order to, to do the better quality for digital media and that. But actually running and programming and operating a station, what you can expect if there isn't feedback tonight differently is it won't be included in the budget's middle, it'll be phased out, and it won't be a very significant phase-out plan unless you really want us to do that. We've talked to the school district, the university, both have given up their stations and shown no interest in rekindling that. We've essentially, I don't know if begged is the right word, but we've suggested to the River Channel that this would be a great expanded coverage. They've shown very little interest, but they haven't shoot us away completely yet, unless Julie has an update on that. But this is not a service that a lot of people find to be something they want to get into. Their, people are getting out of the service and switching to other, other means. So I, I don't really want to, I'm not trying to pound it in, but it, don't, please don't expect anything unless you ask for it tonight. We would be phasing out. We don't believe anybody wants this service from us. We have already pursued other partnerships.
That's what I want to know.
And, and there may be something out there. Maybe if we say we're not doing this, somebody will come forward. But frankly, I don't think it's a good use of staff's time to even, if somebody were to come forward and say, just give me all the stuff, I'll run it. I, I think it still wouldn't be a good use of our resources because it's just not a format, I think, that has a long-term viability based on what we've seen, based on the size of the city we are, based on all the other things we're trying to do. It, it's a service that can have value, but we're not recommending we continue to do it.
Outside, we've gotten outside resources for our cable TV, right? Would they still be available for future funding, whether it's for an internet or other communication projects for viewing the city council and the church meetings?
I'm not sure I understa, I'm not sure I can answer that question for you. Are you asking if we would continue to?
Would the funding still be available that we've gotten from, didn't we have, did we have funding that came from outside for cable?
Yeah, so we don't get any funding any longer for actually doing the programming.
Okay.
A long time ago, it's quite some time now, I don't, the ninety-two Communication Act changed the way that that was done. And then the state passed a law, I think in 2010?
Yeah, it was about 2010, 2011 that we stopped, we did not collect peg fees anymore.
Tax, there's a tax for using the right-of-ways and the airwaves and it's statewide franchise tax. That comes to the city and can go right into the general fund. It has nothing to do with producing local programming. There used to also be a peg fee. So I don't know what the name of the cable company was at the time, but we've had cable franchises over time with different companies and then they've been purchased and eventually they're, they're now owned by Comcast. And at one point, they were actually giving us money to buy cameras and boards and, and produce local programming as part of their franchise requirement. But they haven't done that for a number of years. So, so we don't get paid by the churches to produce their, their items or edit them or put them on for them, nor do we charge them. There, there isn't a revenue model that we had either. So, so this wouldn't impact us fiscally from a revenue standpoint.
That was my question.
Yeah, I, I think this is a good example of a service that the city no longer needs to provide and a way to embrace change that's, you know, already happening elsewhere. So I think, I, I think this is a service that has served its purpose. There are other ways of getting that information out there and I, I think it's clear that that's how we move forward.
Yep, I couldn't agree anymore with Diane.
And I would encourage anybody at home watching this, if they have questions about how to navigate the transition, to please call City Hall. You know, we're all happy to help in this sense.
Yep. And I think that what you guys have set up for phasing out at the end of the year is perfect. Everybody, any of these groups or churches that already put stuff to us to put on there can, they got Facebook, they got YouTube, they got anything they can use, anything they want, they can use. So as far as, in my opinion, is we're on the right course.
So we won't sell any equipment until after the budget's passed. But we, you should expect to see this as part of the budget with little fanfare. It just, we won't program the cost for it. And then once the budget is approved and you've given your final okay, then we'll, you know, deal with the equipment and other things and how that would go. Mr. Mayor.
Perfect. Yep.
So on the sale, I know we probably won't get much for the old equipment, but what do we do with that extra revenue? Is, is there programs and things that we're going to be putting that extra revenue or that extra money into in our efforts?
Yeah, I mean, I think we've shifted a lot of our effort in content creation already. So right now, there's some duplication, although I, you know, it's fair to say we haven't put much effort into cable. So I don't think we're going to free up a whole lot of time or money, but I suspect that whatever we do, we'll just, you'll see more robust use of the other digital media platforms. And, and as we, is our custom, we'll try to make the transition as easy for people as possible. So if somebody calls and says, I need to watch the council meeting, how do I do that? Well, certainly, the library has resources to teach people. We, we can help. We don't necessarily want to go to people's homes and give them individual, but the churches that are, if you recall in our previous memo, the churches had already started to work on a transition plan and, and were, I would say, basically fine with the transition. So they were already working on who's watching and how do we make sure they can still watch? And, and in some cases, their folks didn't want to do it on Facebook. They would rather just have a DVD or something that they can put in. So I think those, the churches especially will have good plans to work with their folks. But you're not going to happen upon a church service anymore. I mean, that would be, one consequence of this decision is people aren't going to be flipping through channels and find the city council meeting. You'll have to want to see the city council meeting for the most part or get a Facebook ad. We might do Facebook ads or things, you know, watch the council meeting. But for the most part, people will watch the content that they want to watch and they'll have to seek it and find it. Or the technology will help them put it in front of them because they, they're a likely viewer of a city council meeting in River Falls, so.
Wonder what that'll do for our ratings.
Churches are already beating us.
Probably get them better. Okay, anybody else have anything else on this?
I do have one more thing. What are the resources available currently? Is it like, do we have, we have community education in the city of River Falls that folks could reach out to? I think the library actually gives some technology training. They could contact the library and get some training on how to use their iPad or their laptop or phone or anything like that, correct?
And there's a lot of middle schoolers and high schoolers in, in River Falls who need community service hours as part of their curriculum. And, and so certainly, that's, I know the church that I have attended has had some days where they put the middle schoolers in a room and say, anybody who, you know, it tends to be the seventy-year-olds, if you want to get training, it's one-on-one training, head on into this room. So I would expect that that's one of the ways we can help is just neighbor to neighbor. So if anybody wants to watch a council meeting, we want to help them be able to do that.
Okay. Move on to administrator's report. Anybody's got anything for Scott? Scott, if you've got anything for us?
Couple, couple notes. One, there isn't a need for a closed session this evening.
Okay.
Just wanted to make that announcement. It's voting time. August fourteenth already is the partisan primary. The polls will open at seven AM to eight PM. There is not a change of polling locations for the August election. So the, the changes you voted on this evening are for the elections after August. We will do everything we can to make sure people go to the wrong spot in anticipation of a new polling place, that we'll get them to the right spot. August sixteenth is our customer appreciation event. The city employees and any council members that'd like to volunteer will be serving our utility and other customers from eleven to one at City Hall. That's a good time. And so we're happy to do that and we hope to see a number of you there. Appreciate the council's approval of the developers' agreement with launch properties. And I look forward to working with them on their significant new facility in Whitel Corporate Park.
Anybody got anything for Scott? Otherwise, move on to comptroller's report.
This is the comptroller's report for June twenty eighteen. General fund revenues through the first half of the year were four million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars, or forty-six percent of budgeted. June revenues include a hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars in lottery credit, the lottery credit settlement, ten thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars in swimming pool and park fees, thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars in DOT County Transportation Aid, and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and thirty-four dollars in building permit fees. Expenditures for the same period were four million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars, or forty-four percent of budgeted, for a net of revenues over expenditures of two hundred and two thousand and fourteen dollars.
Thanks, Diane.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hold. We are adjourned.